...to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please do remain standing for a moment of silence for the victims of the 2001 terrorist attack on September 11th and all those that are continuing to suffer from the after effects of the search and rescue at that end weeks and months later. Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll do the student rep.
All right. Okay. Christine, okay, just raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the states of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
On my position as student representative.
On my position as student representative.
For the Board of Education of the Highland Central School District.
For the Board of Education for the Highland Central District.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Thank you, Christine, for taking off.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you again, Christine.
Yes.
And I can actually want to do a couple comments. I'm just going to have a duo comment but this time instead of later.
Okay.
Okay.
You're up, Christine.
All right. So, the beginning of the school year has definitely been a successful adventure. I would like to thank you guys. I went to Empire Girl State this summer and I talked to a lot of kids that said they don't say the Pledge of Allegiance in the morning. So, I definitely want to applaud you guys for saying, Mr. Zimmer, Mr. Judge. I'm assuming the middle school and elementary school do it as well, but I definitely want to applaud you guys for doing that. And, Mr. Zimmer and Mr. Judge, thank you for also doing a moment of silent reflection this morning. That was also very touching. Mr. Bonjo, read the Monday messages that you've been sending out have definitely been a success for your students. They definitely like to see you guys reaching out and getting to know each other, especially by saying, "Go Huskies." And Spirit Fridays, that has also been a success. The Husky posters, a lot of students have realized that there was a lot of effort put into it and they are definitely appreciating that, too. The picture board in the high school of the teachers and how they spent their summers. It's nice to see that students, to see that their teachers actually have a life outside of school. So, that's definitely positive. And then the vote board in the main lobby now has two different inspirational quotes each day and there's definitely been a lot of positive feedback about that. That's it? Thank you.
Any questions for Christine? Not the first few.
You can show me. It's okay.
Welcome back.
You're welcome.
Okay, acceptance of reports. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, prove and acknowledge that we're doing the following reports. Board of Education meeting minutes, August 7, 2018, and August 15, 2018, the BOE special meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Ed. Discussion? Okay, we'll hold the favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Our principal's report. Joel.
So, Mr. Preier has opened house tonight. It's all like the middle school band.
One of my favorite things about beginning the school year is that when the buses empty kids come in the first day, we always bring all the sixth graders into cafeteria and we have the seventh and eighth graders go right to the gym. And then we do a little thing with, we give them 10 minutes to talk because they're always so excited. They want to greet each other, see other friends. But then we bring the sixth graders into the gym altogether. And the seventh and eighth graders welcome them with a huge round of applause. And you can just see their faces light up. You're right, like, they're scared to death to be there, you know? That's what sixth grade, that's what sixth grade is. They're new, they're scared, and they get this huge round of applause from the seventh and eighth graders. And then I challenge, you know, each year, the seventh and eighth graders, remember how you fell in your sixth grade and you got that? Let's get that back. And they're just so spirited and so wonderful. And then they, that's their start of today. So, it's really one of the really nice things that we do. And it actually started by accident, I guess, before I even was there. The electricity went on on the first day of school and they had to quickly punt and figure out what to do. And they, that's how they kind of handled it and it turned out to be just really positive things, so. You know, we're full swing. Our classes are fully running, everything is underway, couple staff meetings already talking about what we're doing instructional for the school year. Really, really great positive discussions. And if anybody has any time on Friday afternoon to come in last period of the day, which will be 1:30-ish to 2:30, somewhere in that timeframe, you will see a very rousing assembly where we go over all our rules again. Kids get involved in these crazy relay races where they have to put the penny pinny on and get on the cart and push each other up and down and do all kinds of stuff. But it's really that big pep assembly for our students for the year. And they get really into it, teachers get into it, it's a lot of fun. And then the home and careers room is open, so if you want to come in and see it, it's getting used now finally, so we're very excited about that. And one last thing, I met this morning, actually, with Susan Baxter. I'm probably going to get this wrong, but I believe she, her aid, the agency is Alstert County Family Preventive Agency, possibly, is that right? And she's in the preventive unit and she's going to be bringing a program to our school for sixth graders called Too Good for Drugs. She's trained, highly trained in doing that. We're working out the schedule. She'll be starting in October. It'll go on for 10 weeks with our sixth graders. And we're kind of excited about that, too, as well. So, that starts up pretty soon.
All right, questions?
I had a question regarding just the building and the work that went on over the summer. At the last meeting, we got a report that we're pretty much closing out in all these areas, many of them are complete, so.
Yep.
Any concerns that you had, anything you'd want to...
The only thing I would say is the little touch-up work that has left to be done, I guess what they call the punctualist stuff, some of it in the office. The bathrooms are in great shape, they look great. The home and careers room is running, the computer lab is up and running. So, really, no concerns on my part.
Right.
Except for the punctualists, right.
Except for the punctualists.
Right, right. And they were able to get, you know, they closed up at enough time to get the floors waxed and make the place look really good. Last year, of course, we had all the stuff that didn't get waxed, the floors that were torn apart and all that stuff.
How about for the art program, K-I-L-N? I'm just going to be asking about the status of that.
Nothing's happened on that yet.
The, there are some things that have happened, the, because it's being moved from where it was out in the main instruction room to the back room. They had to cut a cupboard out of there, that cupboard is moved and now moved out to the instruction room. The Kiln is being rebuilt in that back room. That's where we are right now, it's not hooked up and usable yet, so. All right, but it's, there's some progress.
Do you have a date when you can expect that?
I have not asked that question yet.
Ready?
Anything else?
Very good. Phil.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have much to add to the opening day principal's report, but I can echo that Chrissy, I can't even call her Chrissy, right?
Yes, you can.
We call her Chrissy. Chrissy's report, I think, was pretty accurate. We had a very smooth opening. One big change we did was, very often, students in high school want to change their schedules or get copies of the schedule or they need the guidance councils right away. So, something we did differently this year is we set up tables right outside the guidance office. So, as soon as students came in, first thing, we had it met, probably about eight to 10 people or so, with copies of everybody's schedule and forms for them to fill out if they needed, if they wanted to request a meet with the council for a schedule change. So, we got that started right away instead of waiting. Usually, we wait a few days and meet with them during lunches. So, we got that right away. That was one big change that we did this year. Any other curricular academic changes I look forward to telling you about next week and for the principal's report. But the opening day went very smoothly. We had a 99.46% attendance rate, which was very good. It's just very few students were here and some were sick and some had, we didn't know were moving and so it was an excellent attendance rate, too, for day one, which as it should be. We had a, something that, it's same as every year, but the harvest in our garden is just extraordinary this year. And took, took a lot of work and a lot of volunteers in August and September. So, we have some bounty for you to share. I'll tell you that very often, when we can, we, when we can, we give the produce to our kitchen. Very often, they don't have the staff or the time to process it all. So, we do give it to students who need some, who want some, they can stop by any time. We take it home if they wish.
More thinking on your part, though.
And...
There's a lot of pictures.
We do donate everything else to local agencies. Many agencies don't take perishables because they have to get rid of it within a day or two. But luckily, Mr. Judge did find some somewhat local agencies. Family of New Paltz?
Yes, so I either, depending on the day, will drop it off at Family of New Paltz and they're always very, very gracious and they gave us a nice shout-out on their social media pages where I drop it off at the lunchbox in the kipsey to be used for dinner that evening.
And over the summer, it's probably twice a week? I'm guessing in August, probably twice a week. We were out in the garden and we had teacher volunteers, Coach Geller and Miss Grayback and a few other teachers would come in over the summer and I would watch them sweating out there. I'd walk out and help once in a while, but watch them sweating out there. And then they'd bring it in and we'd sort it out, so we'd just go and we'd share sort of it before it all goes bad. But that's all I have for tonight. Welcome back, everyone. Any questions? That's it. Italian frying pepper, and it's not hot. That, I guess, is okay.
Do you have any late crops?
I'm sorry?
Any late crops?
I'll let you know next week, we'll make or two. We'll see what I have. Pumpkins. There should be some pumpkins out there. There were grapes, we were going to get grapes today. They look beautiful, but we tried them and we decided to give you two. Because I pictured, oh, grape, and then...
They were cool. They were sitting here and, you know, they were grapes for making jam, not for eating for lunch.
Yeah, so, but they look beautiful, so. So, instead, you got something more edible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, do you have anything to report?
No, just that it's been a busy last two weeks. We had a lot of students transferring in and out. The Friday before Labor Day, we had kind of a rush and trying to get records, those first few days of school is always very difficult. We always try to get them, so we place the students in the right class so we're not switching them once they get here. So, my staff was hounding school districts all over the country trying to get those records, so, you know, thank you to them for being persistent with that and getting everybody squared away pretty quickly for the first few days. At the elementary school, it was very quiet for the first day. I know we were kind of waiting down there for some of our kindergarteners to have some of those meltdowns, but they didn't. We had a great first day down there with some of our newest students and some of our transfer-ins as well, so it's been a good first few days.
Any questions for Patrick? Karen, anything?
We basically have gotten all of our NICE SLAT scores in, records from students that have transferred in. NICE SLAT is going to be done by the middle of next week, we'll get those scores ready. Our STAR assessment, Carol and I have been marking diligently on, that'll be up and running for next week for our diagnostics and our slows to begin. And we've also gotten in our, we worked as far as we can on our CERSA 325, which is our staff evaluation, and we're just waiting now for the release of the data from the state so we can continue and finalize those reports.
Maria, food service, Karen.
Yeah, we had a lot of oozin' ozzes at the high school when they saw all the new equipment because that's the kitchen that had the most renovation this year. Even the delivery people were impressed with our new freezer. Middle school, they got a wonderful walk-in fridge freezer in the kitchen and they got a new oven and a new dishwasher, which we saw we needed. So, we start to see our counts rise, you know, in the beginning, everybody's a little nervous and how to use all those lunchboxes, you know, so, once that gets old, we should see our counts go up.
Transplication.
I'll be working the paper, so we had a really great start off. There was no horror stories about us. Everything went really well. I had a little surprise for the drivers. We, you guys got them a mirror so they could check their backup lights and their rear lights they were very pleased with and their welcome back sign. And then I did breakfast for them Friday. As far as the students, everybody had done their dry runs, it was very successful. The first day, we were a little bit late due to a thunderstorm at dismissal time at the elementary, so that was interesting, but parents were really great and understanding. We were lucky enough that you have a webpage, I believe, that we can post on there that were running late, so that was a great support. So, know that that's being used well in a good way. It's very quiet, not for working. We had bustles today. Bustles might grate you, we're on like 15 minutes behind, which is expected. That's it. Attendance is up, yay.
Any questions for transportation? Technology?
So, I think actually tomorrow, my first thing will be to show Kathy our website, so she, it's not what people are talking about, but I'm not going to, as well, we had a really smooth opening with all of the changes and things that we did to computers. So, it's busy always opening school, but it's been smooth, almost one of the smoothest years ever. And I think because we upgraded all of our computers, they're running much better and people are figuring it out, so, it's still quiet. Okay?
All right, anybody have any questions for any of the directors or the principals? So, we'll run to personnel. Okay, so, I'd like to go into executive session. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second. If I have it, it'll be a quick, no more than can a executive session. Go down to the...
Yes. Oh, thanks, Carol.
Okay, we're back into public session. Under personnel. Anyone have a problem? Taking it as a block, do you want to do individual, but no, we have some recommendations to make after our appointments. Is everyone okay with that? Go to blocking. Okay, so we'll do personnel as a block from A to J. Any decisions, we'll do it separately. Okay, motion to take personnel at the block from A through J. Motion made by Heather, second by Ed. Any discussion?
Just regrets with Steve Massey, we wish him luck.
Okay, we'll hold the favor. Aye. Opposed? So carried.
Yes, Mr. President, we do have a few of our people who just got appointed joined our Highland family, so we have, just in order on the agenda, Michael Zank is here, Michael, let's get a wave. So, Michael's Network Systems Specialist, welcome, Michael. We have Harriet Meyer, English teacher here at the high school, welcome back. And we have our new assistant principal for the elementary school, Jennifer Arroca.
Well, congratulations to our three new hires and we welcome you to the Highland School community and we wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, under business in operation. Surplus kitchen, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, with the following items, be considered surplus and removed in the least costly manner available to the district. A double-decker bulk and oven, item number 20120863 and item 20120858. A motion, please. Motion by Mike, second by Camille. Discussion?
Really, these are just ovens that...
Right, they, all of our electric pieces are now gas.
Right, this is, these are electric, they're now gas. No more bulkens.
No more bulkens. And someone were interested in these, where do you, you just write into, who you write into?
I think, I think it will be posted.
Right, it'll be posted, I'm presuming as surplus and someone to bid on them.
Yeah, I think that's what we've done in the past. Okay.
Yeah. So, let's know if you know something.
Okay, motion by Mike, second by Camille. Any other discussion? Hold the favor. Aye. Opposed? So carried. Sarah?
Well, like everyone has said so far, it was a really great opening of school, it was the best day of the year, second best is graduation, I think. It was fun to see all the students in, even though it was also one of the hottest days we've probably ever had. I really want to thank the teachers, the staff and the students for still being very positive on that, on that opening day, so it was, was a little extreme. But since then, nothing but positive responses from anybody about being back. Maybe I taught the right students, but people seem to be excited to be here, so that's great. Just a quick other update, about two weeks ago, I met with a group that is revising our backpack program, which is the program where we send backpacks of food home with students on Fridays to kind of tide them over over the weekend. The organizers, or the people who have been doing it last year, it kind of fell apart and so they're reviving it this year. And I have to give great kudos to Dennis Desposito and Barbara Phillips, who really have been the ones pushing it for the last several years. They have now teamed up with the United Methodist Church here in town, it's going to be housed there. So, I met with Dennis, Barbara and several members that are connected to the Methodist Church to start talking more about how we as a Highland School community can help with that project. They are going to be working through the Food Bank of Hudson Valley to get the bulk of the food, but they, they need our help supplementing that as well. So, we are having a district meeting Thursday after school. I sent out an all-call to all staff. I have probably close to 15 people that are planning to attend on Thursday to look at ways that they can help out with another, at least 20 people who are willing, couldn't come from Thursday but are very willing to be a part of whatever we put together. At this point, what we're talking about, they, from talking with Dennis, they don't really need a lot of people to stuff the backpacks because the space is not real big, so you really can only have about four or five people there doing that kind of work. But again, doing some of the work to supplement, to bring the food, to have some food drives, all of that, that's really what we'll be talking about more on Thursday, is how can we help maintain a steady supply of food and to add to what the Food Bank of Hudson Valley supplies. So, I'm excited to have that up and running again. I think our whole school community really missed it more than they realized last year. Not, I mean, I'm sure the families missed it, but also members of our staff realized what a big impact it has for many of our students. So, we already, it will be, the first week is this Friday, we already have a list of names from each building, so we'll be getting that up and running. I know one of the things that they have told me, and I've heard several times before, is the actual backpacks, getting those back and keeping supply with backpacks, so that's another thing that we'll be looking at. So, excited about that. Tomorrow is our first instructional council meeting, which is the department chairs and grade level coordinators for each, in each building, and it's a time for us to talk about curriculum and things happening in the district. We're going to be looking this year, as I've said several times this summer, really looking at all the new standards that are coming out, ELA, math, science, social studies, as well as new arts standards. So, we'll be taking each set of standards each meeting and really looking at those more closely and trying to have more vertical conversation and asking for teacher input and the best way to roll some of those out. So, that's the broad stroke for instructional council this year.
Sarah, how many students for the backpack program?
You know, I don't know, I don't. I know, of course, each building has different numbers, but I would say at the height last year, it probably was going out to about 60 different students. Some of those students may be in the same family. You know, they tried to, if it was, you know, if there was an elementary school to a student they really knew about and if we knew that there was a middle or high schooler, we, you know, we tried to make sure that every student in the family received something. Part of this, I think, too, is if we can guarantee a more regular supply, we might be able to do more than that. I, I do believe there's a need for more than that. And they work through the, the social workers and school psychologists in each building. We do everything that we can, now that I've recorded it on, you know, live streaming, we try to do everything we can to keep it confidential so that, you know, not everyone knows that...
That's the nature of the programs, that they can pick up a backpack that looks like any other student's backpack and so no one realizes that they're taking home.
That's the hope. Elementary school students don't seem to get too upset about it, but it's a real issue for our middle and high school students.
The idea behind the backpacks is, is that to supplement that individual's needs over the weekend or the family as a whole?
That individual's student.
That's what I come up with. Okay, that's good.
Which is why we try to make sure that we get everyone. One of the questions that came up at the meeting that we had was, what do we do if we know that there are younger children at home? And that's not something that they necessarily addressed when they were doing the program before, but I think it will, will branch into a whole conversation with this larger group supporting it.
I think there might be some social program available.
Absolutely, which does bring me to, I probably will share it at the next meeting because we're still in the final stages of putting it all together, but as a result of our poverty book study that we did last year, a group of teachers from across the district, primarily Ashley Hopper, who is one of our first grade teachers, they put together an entire resource packet that we'll be posting on our website of all different places that families can go if they have any kind of need. So, there's a whole list of any of the food banks in the entire region with contact information. There's contact information for places that if you need housing, if you need gas, if you need, I mean, all kinds of things. So, very proud of the work that this group of teachers volunteered to come together and put together. It's really a tremendous resource for our entire community. We'll be giving you a copy next week.
Anything for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. President?
Speaker.
So, I want to thank Mr. Verone and Mr. Miller for coming to our poster wars opening day activity. Again, if you are not aware, similar to cupcake war, as you might see on TV, we had the entire faculty and staff, it was a tad warm, but believe me, when the, when the competition started, things really heated up. As I predicted, the store, or the, each team, you might have seen some of the posters, so quickly, just to explain to everyone, each, there was teams of four, there were 80 teams of four, this was the entire faculty and staff, they were randomly assigned to tables, so you had people who may not even know each other on the same team. That's what we wanted, bring everyone together. On your table was one piece of oak tag, there was a Highland Husky logo, there were four pipe cleaners, 10 tickets, a roll of tape and a pen and some scrap paper. That's it. Your 10 tickets, then you go to the store, we had a table about this long, with all other items that you can buy with your tickets. So, for example, a pair of scissors cost a ticket, you know, probably going to need a pair of scissors. And they had 30 minutes, and believe me, once that buzzer went off, they were going nuts. To, to, to fight, it was like Black Friday and it's cabbage patch day or something. It was great. A lot of fun and then the posters, then we judged, we had three winners. A lot of fun, and then the posters, then we're judged, we had three winners, and all posters were hung throughout the entire district. You may have seen a few right in our hallway here. So that was a great opening day. I, I received a lot of positive comments from faculty and staff that, you know, we've never been included on things, some staff, um, you know, so they're very appreciative that they were all brought together. Uh, as the principals have said, uh, it really was a great first week. I certainly would like to welcome Kristi Paluzzi as our new, uh, student representative. I know her parents are here, and, um, you know, they can certainly be very proud, as they should be, for bringing such a, a wonderful order. Um, you're, uh, I got to know Kristi last year, and she's one of our top students, very friendly, and, uh, I know she's got great things in front of her.
Thank you.
Uh, I did send out two Monday messages, as I told you I was going to. I'll make it a little later, next Monday. Uh, I didn't want to panic any elementary parents who received a call from the district at three thirty, and then what, you know, what's going on, so I will make it later, a little before dinnertime next Monday. This morning, I attended Cops and Coffee. Uh, this is the second Tuesday every month, chief wage meet at, uh, Big Netto's. Uh, this is kind of a talk, uh, with the police, so that, that was, that was great. I'll be there next month. Tomorrow night, um, at SUNY Ulster, I'll be attending the president's challenge scholarship ceremony. You might recall that, um, five students, five eighth graders receive scholarships from SUNY Ulster as part of the president's challenge, so they'll get free tuition to SUNY Ulster once they graduate high school. So tomorrow night is the actual ceremony where they'll receive their scholarships. Um, so I'll be there representing the, the district. Um, something else exciting that'll be coming up, um, we're working with the Red Cross, um, the school district, Red Cross, and the, and the Lloyd Fire Department. So there's a program, we're gonna be providing, um, um, smoke detectors to homes and apartments that don't have any. So it'll start at the elementary school with something called the pillowcase program. That'll be in the beginning of October, uh, where the students get a pillowcase, they decorate the pillowcase, and the, the purpose of that pillowcase is to, uh, students will put in their belongings in case of an emergency, and then they leave with that pillowcase. Uh, that way, that will help us identify homes that might be in need of smoke detectors. And then on a day, uh, I believe it'll be the second or last weekend in October, I'll give you the dates, it'll be a little closer, a, an army of volunteers will ascend upon Highland, and they go door to door, and they actually go in and install the smoke detectors right in your homes. So I'm working with Chief Miller, uh, and the elementary school, so it's gonna be a great positive program for the elementary kids and Highland as a whole. Uh, again, uh, we just, uh, so many of us were at the nine eleven ceremony right here in town. Um, very nice ceremony. Um, you know, that day, uh, changed everyone, you know, we just found out not only how small the world is, but how even tinier New York is, because in so many ways, you know, we all were, were touched by that. You know, many of us knew people, uh, who we lost. Um, so I, my heart goes out to those families, uh, and we always remember what happened that day, and always remember, and try to keep as high as possible that feeling of patriotism and togetherness that we felt that day. Uh, it shouldn't take a tragedy for us to feel together, uh, the town, and the country. I want to do, want to thank, uh, all handset and, uh, the fire department, the police department, and everyone else who, uh, had the hand putting that together. Thank you. That's all for now, sir.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Okay.
We'll move on to new business. Uh, any new business, uh, in the last spring up? Old business, um, we said this back in August, we're going to do, confirm some dates for a capital project tour. Um, my suggestion, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be here next Tuesday for our, our meeting next week, uh, but possibly the first meeting in October. Uh, it might give, um, the contractors and everyone else a little bit more time to wrap up the loose ends, and then we can do a tour. Do you want to try to do, um, in one evening, where we can, uh, start out, say, an hour and a half before our scheduled meeting, nine, and, uh, start at the elementary school? Hopefully, we'll get a school bus.
We can get a small bus, and we can...
It's not the one that Tom purchased, no. It'll be a smaller.
We can get a bus if we need, and we can all drive together. We can meet here, and then drive...
And work our way back.
And work our way back. Sounds like a plan.
Do it for the year first, uh, meeting...
What date is that?
Yep.
Is that the second?
Yep.
We'll schedule for a seven o'clock meeting, we can, uh, start at five thirty, meet here.
And anyone who can't make that, uh, we think, you could arrange, if any board members, because of work schedule, any other person's schedule, you could arrange with myself and Mr. Miller and/or I can take you, uh, either before or after on the same tour, so that you see it all, so. But I know, you know, schedule it tight. We'd be more than happy to do that.
And those that live closer to the elementary school, you might want to let the drive right there, and they'll be there at five thirty, and coming all the way there, and then back down again, so it's a possibility. But we'll, we'll have some dialogue before that, a lot.
About twelve seconds.
So we'll start at the elementary school, and move up to the middle school, and then up here to the high school. Um, we, we saw the first phase of, of the project, we already did the, the pavement and all that reconfiguration apartment, so this is the second phase of it, basically, which is predominantly interior work. Elementary school, the main office area, the cafeteria, science lab, um, that's probably the bulk of that work. Middle school is the main office, and that science lab, bathrooms, and the home ec., which everyone should see.
Home ec., yeah.
Uh, and up here is the high school, again, it's the, uh, main office, uh, secured vestibules and, uh, locker rooms, and science, uh, computer lab, and the new, like the purpose room, waiting room, whatever that is, yeah.
Fitness center. Fitness center.
Oh, okay. Um, so that's, you know, it should be a half hour, thirty minutes, should be fine, although we'll see all the, all the, all right? Um, the support service is meeting tomorrow, um, just to get a, uh, update, so we can fill the rest of the board in on the final leg of, uh, the capital proj, the current capital project, and then some discussion regarding the upcoming capital project. And, uh, we haven't heard from our design team yet, but, uh, I think at some point in time, we should hear from them, get a feel of exactly what we're doing in each and one of the buildings. If anyone has any ideas, suggestions that you might want to throw out there to hopefully incorporate into the project, um, it's time to do it, uh, during the design, uh, phase of it.
Three thirty tomorrow.
That's for myself, Tom, and Ed. Andy, anything else? Okay, uh, board of education policy, uh, electronic youth policy, number five six five one, a third reading, be resolved the board of education upon recommendation of superintendent. Approves the following board of education policy titled electronic policy, number five six five one, as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Ed. Discussion?
I'm all for it, when we head with this, but I would like to see that we discuss it for this meeting, the staff, and then the, uh, or interview and, uh, survey, to find out if there's anything, and so you can...
Right, I think that's important. I did notice on the, uh, that if, there is a revision date of, of, like, eight thirty one, I think it was, from council, but it was still Margot May. At our, at our current council...
Our current council has looked at it, and they would prefer that they are not named as the people who, I don't know what reasoning, no, not that, I, not that the individual council or is named, or whatever.
Well, even if it says firm.
Yeah, I'll put, yeah, I'll put the firm in there.
Okay. Are they okay with that? Because I think...
I'll double check, yeah. But she, she specifically said, we don't name the individual lawyer who reviews it.
So the firm, yeah. Has to be the firm, like...
So they did, were you...
They have, yes.
Can we get a, can we get a reason why they're, they want, they don't want the individual name?
No, they probably don't want a per official...
I think it's fine, so they put the firm name on it.
You mean, in our policies, there always has...
These, it always has, the, the last is reviewed by district council, and the last one was Margot May, uh, two twenty one ten, eleven five thirteen, and eight thirty one eighteen.
I don't think there's some individual...
So, because they're the ones that are coming up with the new changes in, in reg, in stated regulations that are incorporated into policies, so...
I'll talk to her, or I'll, I'll ask.
Yeah.
I'd like to go ahead and hear your perspective on it.
My guess would be they just want, I mean, it's a whole firm, this firm, rather than the individual, but I'll ask.
Yeah, you can do that with the firm.
Yeah, and, and she didn't have any changes. The one thing she did was add smartwatches to the list of possible electronic devices, um, which is a huge, huge thing for, especially for during exams. Um, and the other change was, there was one part that she found repetitive, that, where we had talked about video recording, and I think she eliminated that part. So there, there were no major, major changes from her end.
We are going to follow...
Yes, absolutely, and where I start, it's off the building, please.
Okay, um, should we make it, uh...
You got Mike and Ed.
Mike was, uh, made the motion, Ed's, uh, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So Carrie. Student wellness policy, seven five one zero, second reading, be resolved the board of education upon recommendation of superintendent, approves following board of education policy titled student wellness policy, seven five one zero, as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Camille. Discussion?
Okay, just one question on there. Right at the end of the policy, it talks about a, um, report that's done every three years on district-wide compliance with the established nutrition program. I don't recall seeing one, I could have just missed it, but are we doing that every three years?
We just had our administrator, who, you, discuss here.
Okay, so will we get a copy of that?
Um, I can send you when I proceed.
Okay, 'cause it specifically says in there that a copy is sent to the board of it, so I just want to make sure that we're following. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ready to move it, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So Carrie. Our concussion management policy, number seven five one six, second reading, be resolved the board of education upon recommendation of superintendent, approves the following board education policy titled concussion management policy, seven five one six, as presented to board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Tom. Discussion?
Question, that one, it refers to an athletic trainer, and I know we had had the part-time one for a while in the last year's budget, we had money for...
So we had...
So we had appointed the firm that we use part-time as full-time, right? Is that right?
I think you were here to be...
That's it, I don't think I was having any, I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So Carrie. Anything for the good and well-fair of the district?
Is it possible in the future of, of nine eleven, I'd have any back-to-school events? Maybe at the open house tonight for the elementary...
Yeah, we were approached by some folks there, which was about, uh, sure, parents having their tough trips, you know?
So you're, you're speaking about all after-school activities?
Oh, like open house.
We had tonight, yeah. I just want to compliment, I, one of the big things I've always been, uh, a corner is further integration of the school and the community, and seeing, you know, a, a lot more of, and I, and I love the direction that's been following around. They, uh, I would love to see us, us coming up out of the schools and into the community, and becoming a visible force, and letting people know that, you know, the tax dollars are well spent, because, you know, we are, and so I applaud you for the efforts, hopefully, and Saturday, and the staff, and I hope that we continue in that direction.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I'll open the meeting up to, hold a comment.
Well, I'd like to make a comment. My name is Ray Paluzzi, I'm Kristi's dad. Um, and in the past years, we have, and we, meaning Hannaford Pharmacy, has serviced your district, as well as adjoining school districts and providing immunizations to your staff and faculty, your driver's staff, as well as your teachers and custodial staff. Um, we've had tremendous results, good things have come for that, it was at no cost to your district. Uh, it still remains at no cost to your district. Um, last year, there was a stop in that for some unknown reason, I'm not quite sure. Uh, we would like to try and reestablish that service for you guys. Last year, we had astronomical numbers of flu cases in our community, and it's looking like we're gonna start seeing that again this year. Um, I have already seen record numbers of immunizations in just the last week. Um, I would like to know who I could speak with, or if there's any objection to the board, provide it with us providing that service. We came to each individual school, middle school, the elementary school, and the high school, at their convenience, and, you know, if people choose to participate in that, that's fine, if not, that was fine also, but at least it afforded your staff the opportunity to receive the benefit of that at no cost. It's one of the benefits they would normally have if they walked into a store, we just bring it right to you guys there. Improves your productivity, the teachers that are out, keeps everybody well, driver's staff. Um, so we'd like the opportunity to participate in, with the district again this year, if there's any objections to that. I don't, you know...
Was there, was there a big conversation, Rachel, directly with them?
Just call, uh, Mr. Jacobson, we can, can appointment, do not.
Sounds good.
How's that?
Sounds great.
Six nine one one zero one four.
Wait, is that, is that service offered for any other, um, inoculations, doc?
Absolutely. We can come to you, we do your pneumonia shots, and right now, Hannaford is one of the only people that is sitting on several hundred doses of Shingrix vaccine, which is indicated for people fifty years of age and older for shingles, that you cannot get pretty much anywhere else, none of the other stores. We have pre-committed to that, so we are sitting on probably, what, seven hundred thousand dollars worth of Shingrix vaccine. Not that that's what we're looking to give you, I'm more concerned about, I mean, we're happy to do that, but the point of the question is, is yes, well, we come, we can provide a, a full complement of immunization services. Your pooping cough vaccine for people who are gonna be expecting grandchildren, um, yeah, so, I mean, that's something you're gonna need to have, um, we do that, we can bring that right to you, uh, here at the building. Uh, your Shingrix or Zoster vaccination, if you choose.
Can't see a lot.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, as well, as well as all the other complements, you know, your two different pneumonia vaccines and the flu immunization as well. Yeah, so, and, you know, we can give more than one immunization, so if you needed, like, a pneumonia shot and a flu shot, that was certainly, we can give two shots in a day, that's usually what the, what the course is, to get you started, or a Shingrix shot and a flu shot. But it's, I know we serviced in a joining district that, as, as a matter of fact, today was so excited, she was like, "Oh, you're a sticky note on my desk, I couldn't wait to know you." So, I mean, so I want to, you know, provide that same service to you guys, you know, it's easier to keep people healthy than to get them healthy, so, and it's free.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate you bringing that short attention, 'cause I don't think from a board perspective that I was aware that that didn't happen last year and has happened in the past, so...
Yeah, there seemed to be a lot of dilemma about that last year, not necessarily within you guys, but, um...
And we had several, I'm the manager in Modena, Hannaford, and we had several of the teachers come to us, some, someone to raise, someone, and it's kind of hard, you know, they're, they're busy, they have busy lives, and it's more convenient if we come to the school rather than coming, you know, waiting in line, and they could fill their paperwork out.
Yeah, we had everything done ahead of time, so all they had to do was just sign and get their immunizations. I mean, it, I, it made no sense to me why they didn't want to participate in this, 'cause they could walk into any pharmacy and get the shot, and it was still the same deal. It's just it's a convenience for you guys, for us to come to you and have it happen. Nobody has to go out of their way.
No, no, legal ramifications, is that right? For, for adults and teachers, and they sign their own.
Yeah, I mean, it's not any different than if you walked into a store and had it done, except we're coming to you. Just making it easy for you.
Is it, is it, if there was some kind of implication as the district...
No, we carry our own liability policy, everything is in place, so, I mean, it's...
Good, appreciate it.
Okay? Thank you.
He didn't embarrass you too bad, right, Kristi?
What?
He didn't embarrass you too bad, see?
Sure we did, but she suffered through it. That's what basic bills are all.
Hannaford are valued community partners.
Absolutely.
This is the second student representative we brought, so.
It's the last one, though.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment.
Nope.
Motion to adjourn, I want to thank everyone for coming out, we started a little later, but we're transposing, probably less time than we think on our normal. Motion by Mike, seconded by Camille, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so Carrie.